Call the October 18th, uh, plan. Common Council meeting order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Alderman Hopeford.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Here.
Alderman Nelson.
Here. Governor Corum, please rise and join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, the common council and city staff that the business appreciation event is Thursday evening. Tuckaway Country Club. Be good if you can make it, thank you. First order on the agenda is citizens' comment period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address. And please confine your comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Bedding, 11720 West Ryan Road. I'm here mainly to get verification on item nine. We've been told several times verbally that where they're running water down our street, that we would not be assessed or forced to hook up. Maybe that's the case, I hope so. But, quite frankly, I don't trust it. Is there any way we can get that in writing?
I believe there was a common council action once upon a time that discussed that you would not be assessed for this water main. So, what's proposed in item G9 tonight is, as part of the assessment process, that services would be provided. Or, when a water main is done by a private developer, or in this case, it did, they would still provide the services, but whether you would or wouldn't be assessed has no bearing on this on G9. So if you're not being assessed for the water main, you would not be assessed for the services.
All right. But once again, is there a way, because I mean, like I say, I mean, we were, been through all this four years ago.
I would also say that common council has not directed us to do a special assessment.
All right. I mean, I guess that would be more of a question for the city attorney. Is there a way we can get that in writing?
City Attorney.
Off the top of my head, whatever was done, I'm assuming was in the southwest sanitary sewer district area.
But this is the water.
And that has a separate code provision for it, per recollection.
I would suggest to you, the southwest sewer district is referring to sanitary sewer issues, not the water.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking the city attorney is, since we were giving this statement, and I spoke to Glenn just, I think it was last week, and even he told me the same thing last week. And it's not that I don't necessarily, that it's, I don't believe Glenn, but a year from now, five years from now, all of a sudden, you do a change of ordinance, and now what? We have a curb stop in front of our house, and now we're forced to hook up, or whatever. And what I'm asking for is something in writing saying that, no, as long as we own that house, and we live there, we don't have to do that. I don't want any surprises a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand the bottom line, but I would need all the facts and records from whatever occurred, whenever it occurred.
If you could give me a couple weeks, I'll try to provide those records.
And my second comment would be item one. That's another project going on down our street, and it really shouldn't matter, that has no bearing on it. But, for the city to be paying for a piece of property for a developer who's actually profiting from it, and is going to still use that piece of property as an access in an emergency, or what have you, the city should not be paying for that with taxpayer dollars. If, if, if the city is going to own it, then the city should turn around and lease that back to them for that usage. Because the city's still got to do upkeep on it, and it's all done at taxpayer expense. And meanwhile, the developer's profiting off of the project. So, if they want to donate that land, fine, but taxpayers should not be flipping the bill for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And just a reminder, three minutes, folks. Mr. Pelkey, good evening.
Andy Pelkey, 9320 West Grandview Court. I just want to go back to the beginning with the council with regard to our property tax assessment problems. In 2014, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel watchdog group published an article showing the results of their rather extensive investigation into unfair property taxes throughout the state. And I have a reference to the article there, and I gave you a digital copy, I'll give you one so you can link to it. But the headline from that rather length, I think it was nine, 10 months it took them to do this, to this study, it was quite, quite extensive. But the headline is "Across Wisconsin, Uneven Property Assessments Fly in the Face of Fairness." And the line below it is the part I want to call attention to. It says in dozens of communities, the ones they studied, 20% or more of property taxes are being paid by the wrong people. So, property taxes is a zero-sum game. If the city says, I got to have $10 million in property taxes, then the assessed value of your property determines your share of that $10 million. That means that if somebody is under-assessed, and they pay not their fair share, that means other people have to pay more than their fair share, okay? And it's a zero-sum game. And this article, this investigation, found that 20% or more, that's a, that's a big number, okay? It's a really big number. So, unfair property taxes occurs when property is not uniformly assessed. So it's really important that we get it right. If it's not done right, then many people pay not only their own tax that they justly owe, but they have to pay a portion of somebody else's share of the tax burden, so it's unfair. Now, like everyone else in the state, Franklin taxpayers are getting squeezed. Everything we spend money on is significantly more expensive. In the last 12 months alone, food is up 13%, energy is up 19%, home price is up 20%, rent is up 7%. At the same time, wages nationally up about 5%. The stock market's down 20, and inflation has eroded the purchasing power of all of our savings. So who wants to pay an extra 20% or more for property taxes they don't owe? How about just 10? How about 5%? If you don't know the answer to these questions, then you're out of touch with the people you represent. Nobody wants to pay more than the tax they justly owe. As it stands right now, when people get their tax bill in December, it is a certainty that many taxpayers are going to get squeezed even more by this administration, because this administration did not care enough about Franklin taxpayers to ensure that property assessments are just and equal. It's a big problem. And if, if that doesn't get you to do something about it, just remember this when you ask those same people to vote for you again this spring. It's just wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello?
Good evening.
I'm Melissa Trump, address of 9455 West Loomis Road. I'm currently a detective at the City of Franklin Police Department. I'm a 23-year employee at the City of Franklin Police Department, and I'm here to address some issues on behalf of the police union. I'm currently the sergeant-at-arms for the police union, and I would say that the morale at the police department is at an all-time low. We have had, attempted to address these issues internally, and after last night's personnel committee, I feel it's time that the citizens of Franklin know what's going on. So, last night at the personnel committee, our supervisors, our sergeants, asked for an increase in their compensation. 90 hours. The patrol officers currently are able to have 200 hours. And they asked for an increase of 90 hours, so it could match the people they're currently supervising. You brought on a new representative for the personnel committee, someone who has experience in human resources, and yet you disregarded her vote. A person who you said had experience in this matter, and who voted for it. So it was very disappointing, and I think the sergeants were very angered over that. I know I was, I'm not a supervisor, but it was disheartening. The only people in the City of Franklin who have not received a raise are its police officers since January 1st of 2022. Everyone else received a raise, 2% plus market wage. So that's what, could be two and a quarter, or up to four, four and a half. Yet, the police officers for the City of Franklin have not received a raise. So we currently do not have a contract, and I don't foresee settling this anytime soon. Currently in arbitration, I'm just wondering how much the city is paying for a labor attorney, when it won't pay for its sergeants, but they're asking for 90 hours of compensation, which is a minimal amount. We currently have a staffing shortage for the City of Franklin, particularly the police department. We are short on officers, and does it affect the citizens of Franklin? Yes, it does, because our staffing is now short. Our minimum officers on the street is now less. And I would like to see something done about it. How you increase law enforcement officers here is you need to give them a raise. You need to make it attractive for other officers to come here. The law enforcement officers work together, and we talk to each other. And they see how the city is, the current city administration is treating its officers, and maybe that's why you're not getting applicants. I would like to say more, but my three minutes is up.
Thank you, Detective, appreciate that. Anyone else? Anyone else? Ms. Davis, good evening.
Good evening. Debbie Davis, 9460 South 96th Street. And I am currently a candidate for Wisconsin State Assembly District 82. So, um, I want to think, I want to speak to potentially three things. The first thing is I'm also concerned about the first item on the agenda with purchasing that, the corner of Cape Crossing. So this was a very difficult process. In my mind, it was another failed process, the approval. Everyone who came to the public hearings spoke against this process. We were concerned about how wet the property is, how that would affect neighbors, road traffic, all kinds of things. At one point, we asked that the developer answer a bunch of questions, and he came back with answers at the last minute, and it was passed when no one had time to review the answers. So, now, I'm concerned that the southeast corner of the property, the southeast, or, yeah, southeast corner of the property, that the city's going to pay our tax money to buy that. So that corner is not of any use to the developer, except it does plan to put the emergency exit there, is my understanding. But it's filled with easements and wetlands, so they can't build there, we can't build there either. So Mr. Bedding mentioned that they could have donated the land to us, and that is true, but I think it would have been more appropriate, I think it is more appropriate, if the developer just provides us an easement for the trailhead. We made a lot of concessions to that developer for the development, and I think that we should be provided an easement for the, for the trailhead, and that we should not have the responsibility of maintaining that land, we should not lose the taxes for that land, and we definitely shouldn't pay for it. But it looks like the proposal is not only that we buy it, but we buy it at market value. So, I'm opposed to that purchase. I've also been, I've also heard that there are some discrepancies in how different complaint processes are handled by the city, by the council, and that there's a lot of resolution that happens in closed doors, and so then we don't have an understanding of how things are really resolved. I was asked to pass that on, and, there's one thing, oh. If our, the city attorney would look into the statutes around political signage, because according to what some of us have read, that signs could be put on city land that are but residential land if the residents are responsible for the maintenance of that land. So if you could review that, that would be helpful, and let us know, because there's been some signs removed that seems not compatible with the state statutes. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one else rise, I will close the citizens' comment period, move on to the approval of the regular common council meeting minutes of October the 4th. There is a new revised minutes at your place, G10 was changed. Wilhelm and Eichman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings, no organizational business, no letters and petitions. Move on to business items, item G1. I think I got to get there. Is a resolution authorizing certain officials to execute subdivision development agreement with Cape Crossing subdivision. I'm sorry. Alderman Wilhelm.
It's my understanding there were a couple people here that had concerns about the city and purchasing this property. I was one of the people that sort of was in agreement with most of the statements that were made, that I didn't think that a property that had that many easements over it and encumbering it had the value that it did, or that we should be taking over the maintenance of that. More cost to the city, especially hearing what else we heard at citizens' comment period tonight about our police department. Don't think we need to spend money where we don't need to. However, we're, we're down this path, the rest of the council members decided to do this. But I think what needed to be clarified here for the residents that was, it, I believe what they're doing is they are making, they are donating the property. Of course, they're also donating with it all the maintenance responsibilities for an encumbered piece of property. But what they did was, they took a fair market value, and then they divided that into what they believed this property was for. So, they said the price of the land was worth $22,617 per acre, and then they computed that, and then they said they're basically going to come up with a $13,660.06 value to the property. And then, the staff had our appraiser sort of agree with that, or our assessor sort of agree with that. It's probably not that far off, however, with all the encumbered easements on it, I would think it would be a little bit less, because it's not as buildable as an actual acreage. But I just wanted to clarify those points for the residents, and I don't know who's going to be responsible for the gas company that needs to come in there. Is that going to be our responsibility now that we're taking it over? When they have to come in, they have to notify for what they're doing, and now we're taking on more staff responsibilities for that as well. But, like I said, we're down this path, and I'll yield the floor for the alderman of the district to make whatever motion you'd like to.
Alderman Wilhelm did appropriately outline what this is. This is not a cash purchase by the city, this is an establishment of fair market value for tax purposes for the developer. We're not writing a check. Alderman.
Now, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I concur with Mayor Olson's assessment of this. I was going to simply ask Mr. State Engineer, how much, not to put you on the thing, but how much more work is this going to do to your current staff for taking care of this? Is it going to, how will it impact them either way? Is there anything else they're going to be doing out that way? Is it going to be a total special trip out here, just to hit that?
No, I, as, so we discussed this property, I believe at the last meeting. Is, the direction is we're not building a parking lot, we're not building restroom facilities or anything like that. But this will give us a place, when we do go out to maintain the trail, we can pull our equipment off, we can, you know, park our vehicles while we, you know, maintain the trail that we plan to start constructing next year. You know, occasionally, I guess we would, we would mow it just like we would when we mowed the trails. So, I would say that nominal effort.
Thank you. I'll make the motion approved.
Nelson and Barber, all those in favor, Mr. City Attorney.
I, I thought I tended to hear zero financial impact. And what is proposed within the development agreement is that the subdivider will obtain a credit against the impact fees that developers paying, so those, in effect, get reimbursed up to that amount, just for clarification.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G2 is an ordinance to amend zoning R3 single-family, State C1 to R3 suburban for a plot located at 8979 42nd Street for Christian Sartler and Karen Sartler. Hanneman and Barber, Mr. City Attorney.
With the interim planner on this, and I don't see him here. In any event, here was my concern. This is a natural area, and he understands that, or concurred with my thought when we discussed it before the last plan commission meeting, that a conservation easement would be required for that particular area. And so my thought was, all right, the C1 area district is nonexistent. So, the thought was, do not maintain that as the zoning, but the approval is not in effect on the approved to rezone until a conservation easement is provided and approved. So there's a recorded area akin to what C1 shows on a zoning map now. You would actually have some boundaries of what the natural resources are for all future persons interested in or about that property. And also that with regard to the structure, obviously, and that's mentioned in the council action sheet, the natural resource special exception would be required to do any improvements within the area, and as part of the conservation easement process, that would be allowed within. So, there was no mention of conservation easement on there. My thought would be, that approval of the C1 is, is not in effect until there's a conservation easement provided. Because I, my recollection, and I'm not the planner or the engineer, was the many, many, many times C1 districts were rezoned, it was, essentially, there was nothing there of any substance. And that's one of the reasons the C1 district wasn't carried over into the unified development ordinance, because nature had changed through all the years. So, that's just my thoughts on it.
Well, Alderman Wilhelm, one second. This is, in, in effect, just removing the C1 district and making it the residential district to match. The buildings are not in the C1 district, in the C1 zone. There was a separate proposal to build a garage that encroached on all of that, and that caused the plan commission a lot of heartburn. And their decision was, get rid of the C1 because it's been applied for, but anything else you want to do has got to go back through the system for natural resources special exception. And frankly, as chairman of the plan commission, there's, I don't see any way that, and I've told them this, I don't see there's any way that they can accomplish what they want to accomplish on the side of the property that they want to accomplish it on, at all. Because it would, it, there's lots of environmental issues with it. But all this is, is taking the C1 zoning out and making it residential, so it's all map. Alderman Wilhelm, on the motion.
On the motion, and then comments regarding how we got to the motion. I would not be in favor of supporting this without added language that it's based upon having the easement. So, just a, a little bit of history. I noticed that the staff, who wasn't around when, you know, Pat Meehan was here, and the ordinance was written, and the city attorney, we did this great hearing on how we came up with this, and the state put shore buffers on and all that. But, the language on page 40 of the staff write-ups is the C1 is obsolete zoning. And C1 may be considered obsolete, but conservancy and easements are still valid. And if you, what you have is, here is a creek, and on the north side of the creek is a separate property owner, and they have conservancy zoning. And on the west side, you have a stream that comes into this property, and they all have conservancy zoning, and all the way up the creek. And then on the other side of the road, you have conservancy zoning, and they all do too. So, what's being asked here is remove the zoning off of just this one parcel, which is kind of spot rezoning, for me. That's why I really don't think it's a good idea when I read the, the language in the whereas clauses that says we think this is in the best interest of the community. Unless you put that clause in there, that this is contingent, or however, the city attorney didn't quite say it, contingent, but not in effect until the conservation easement is on the property, I think you're just setting this up for a risk down the road, and it's, it's not in the best interest. And without that section in there, I would not support the two whereas clauses where we determined that the proposed rezoning would promote the health, safety, and welfare of the city. And we, rezoning is consistent with the master plan, because it is not. C1 zoning was left there as a red flag. And so, when someone came in to rezone, it would be a red flag for planning staff to say, hey, we realized there was resources, now go out and further define the resources. Their own consultant redefined the resources, didn't really change much from what was there. This creek is still there, it's still considered navigable by the DNR. And putting anything in that shore buffer, which we up here by state law are obligated to protect, is why the city attorney's language should go into that motion. And I would ask the maker of the motion to insert that into the resolution somewhere, to make it so it is. Yes, that's it.
Just so happens that the maker of the motion is next up. Alderman Hanneman.
And I'm very amenable to that amendment. So I will amend my motion to approve the rezoning contingent upon, would that be the word? City Attorney?
But approval is not in effect, approval is not in effect until the applicant property owner obtains approval of a conservation for the area.
And that would be my amended motion. And that would be my amended motion. No.
And should probably add in there after a comma, with any approved natural resource special exception for the property to be part of the conservation.
That's your second as well, Alderman?
Second with those conditions.
Part of the conservation easement area.
So the understanding is this motion will go forward with technical corrections by the city attorney? Question, Alderman?
The attorney, should they decide not to move forward with the natural resource special exception, which will be quite costly, then what is the clause for the rezone? And what's, what's the direction at that point? Because according to what I read on the DNR, they're kind of saying it's not very likely. And to meet the no practical alternative analysis in our own code is going to be very hard. So we're kind of pushing them down a road to go spend more money that probably isn't going to be allowed. And that's kind of a concern for me, too.
I believe I placed a comma after stating the conservation easement. But in the event that there's a natural resource special exception application which is granted, then that would be allowed, obviously, within the conservation easement area. So it's two separate things. It does not require a natural resource special exception application and approval.
Requires a conservation easement. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Hanneman still has the floor and then we'll go to Alderman Wilheim.
And that is my understanding that the C1 zoning would remain in place until such a time that the property owner should choose to go and spend the money for the conservation easement and the natural resource special exception, or, and/or. However...
Just the conservation easement at the property.
Yes. Yes. So they're not required to do that. And until such a time, they would choose to do so, the C1 zoning would remain in place. But I do believe after the Plan Commission meeting, the property owner was pretty clear on where things stand. That state law really prohibits any, any sort of plan that they want to build that garage in there. I think we tried 10 different ways to find a way for it to fit for them and it just wasn't going to happen, unfortunately for them.
I would just like to hear the motion read back for clarity. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Alderwoman Hanneman moved to adopt an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of land from R3 suburban estate, single-family residence district, and C1 conservancy district to R3 suburban estate, single-family residence district, specifically located at 8979 South 42nd Street, approximately 1.507 acres, Christian S. Sartler and Karen R. Sartler applicants, with the approval not in effect until the applicant obtains approval of a conservation easement, comma, with any approved natural resource special exception for the property to be part of the property. Seconded by Alderman Barber.
Thank you.
Subject to technical corrections by the city attorney.
Those were his words.
Subject to technical corrections by the city attorney. If we kill each one of these tonight, we'll never get out of here, okay?
And this will go in the ordinance? It'll go in this, in the section, his language?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I really want to see.
Yeah.
So it's in, because otherwise I can't support the whereas clause.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G3 is a consulting agreement with Rayburn Consultants for General Planning Services while we're in transition. This is the same agreement as the last time we did it. Well, now what? Alderman Wilhelm, I'll give it to Alderman Eichmann. You know, ladies first, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G4 is Parks Commission request for review of Parks marketing materials. You want an open conversation? There's a lot of space dedicated to the Milwaukee County Park System. And I understand why it's there. It's just there's a lot of space there.
There is a lot of space there.
And it'd be great if we had space on their marketing materials, but...
Well, I can't, can't make that fit anymore on here.
But I encourage this. This is good.
Yes, no, this is tremendous work that has been done by volunteer Parks Commissioner Karen Malecki. She has a lot of experience in this type of graphic and marketing material work. And she's proposing that this sort of become the landing page for the Parks Department on the city website and be used in marketing any other place. Maybe it could be put out on a city newsletter. Parks Commission has even discussed something as doing a Parks Calendar fundraiser with this information and then maybe using photography from community members on the calendar, sort of like a contest or whatever. But this is just a really comprehensive, color-coded, so you know what parks have which amenities and where to go to do what you want to do. And it's just a very fresh, updated look for, for the parks. And the commission is hoping for approval.
I've rethought my suggestion. And I would just suggest to the Parks Commission, depending on what happens here tonight, we want to get some more room for the map and things that just take the descriptions out of the county parks. But the one thing that would help the clerk's office a lot would be noting on which of these pavilions requires a permit. It says rental available. That's fine. I'm good with that. Alderman Wilhelm.
I really like the concept. It's nice to get people out to understand. I had started in my district to put together a complete walking connection map. And while it's really great to have these trails, it would also be nice to have an updated system on how you can safely get to them without a car. And maybe that can be a future project.
Baby steps.
Right. So just putting that out there because, you know, the trails over in my district, they're just like hanging out there on their own. But I've worked very hard to put sidewalks in that actually gets you to all of these trails. So they actually are way more connected than they look on the map, so.
One other comment, though, as I just heard Alderman Barber quietly mention, we do not have a new parkland purchase in this map identified. But since it's not a quote-unquote usable park, other than maybe for snowmobilers, that's something we'll, the commission will have to revisit on how to denote that park.
Oh, Alderman Wilheim, sorry, Sandy. Would that be on the website as a printable PDF? Thank you.
Action on the side.
That would be a move to approve and endorse the new Franklin Park internal map.
You would be seconding.
With technical corrections as discussed.
And does your motion allow the Parks Commission to take into account the suggested changes?
Yes.
Okay. Sure?
Yeah.
Why not? Okay. Alderman Barber on the motion. Push your button, Mike.
There's some discussion of funding. For, how is the printing cost? Is that part? Is that part of the Parks Commission budget then at that point, or?
I'd honestly have to look at the budget again.
Didn't even get it to that point first.
Yeah, we could come back and ask for a budget amendment if need be.
Possibly the distribution of it then at that point.
We're not talking a million dollars here.
City newsletter.
Okay.
Anything else on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G5, resolution for acceptance of stormwater management agreement for 5500 West Oakwood Park Drive.
Move to approve.
Hanneman and Barber, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. There's a new one at your places. G6, resolution of acceptance of stormwater management facilities agreement for 2855 West Forest Hill. The change merely adds the tax key number. Alderman Wilheim.
I didn't understand this, but it, because it appears like it's a residential home and I didn't know why it had bioinfiltration basins on a residential home. Did they build something beyond the norm of the MMSD rules? Or why does the city have this on this property?
New MMSD rules based on square footage. So you get a large home with a long driveway.
That's all I needed. That's what I thought it was, but it wasn't clear by the information. Thank you.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G7's library proposal. Jennifer? You're up. And bring reinforcements.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Oh, yes, I was planning on it. I was trying to get my microphone to work first. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jennifer Lovell, the Library Director at the Franklin Public Library. Next to me is Maria Imp, our Library Board President and clicker through the slideshow. And Mike Karlovich, one of our board members, and Terry Vares, another one of our board members. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the time to come and speak in front of you. Part of our strategic plan is to inform the common council annually on library activities, what we're doing so that you're informed. For those who are new, who weren't here when I did the initial strategic plan presentation, we changed our mission statement to the Franklin Public Library is dedicated to providing every member of our community with abundant opportunities to learn, explore, and connect. Part of our strategic plan also, we outlined some library values. We are dedicated to our community. We recognize that all of our efforts will have a larger impact when we intentionally center them on the aspirations and lives of the people in our community. We are dedicated to fostering connections in our community. We will be a welcoming gathering place for the community and a cornerstone of family, cultural, and civic life in Franklin. We are dedicated to reaching out to our community. We will develop relationships and work in concert with our city, schools, and other community partners to provide services to the community outside the library walls. We are dedicated to fostering curiosity and lifelong learning in our community. We will cultivate an open-minded and creative environment that encourages everyone to explore new experiences and ideas. We are dedicated to being good stewards of the library and all it contains. We will efficiently deliver outstanding value to the community by thoughtfully and responsibly managing the resources that have been entrusted to the library. We value our staff as a vital resource for the library and our patrons. We will continuously develop staff to their greatest potential as they are our greatest resource and the key to upholding our mission and values. We will provide meaningful staff engagement and robust staff support to ensure employee longevity and a healthy life-work balance. So the first strategic goal surrounds programming. The Franklin Public Library will provide quality programming and events that deliver value to our community while best utilizing the resources of the library. So our objectives are comprehensive evaluation, being strategic with our programming, coordinating with our community groups and members, and providing programming in the community, especially areas that have been traditionally underserved. So I wanted to point out, you know, unfortunately, the first two years of our strategic plan were a pandemic. In 2020, we had 438 total programs with 13,688 in attendance. These were both in-person and virtual via YouTube and Facebook Live. In 2021, we had 391 total programs with 16,091 in attendance, with more in-person and less virtual. So far in 2022, we've had 371 programs with 10,582 in attendance, mostly in-person through September 30th. And I'm sure we will meet 2021 statistics because a lot of our heavily attended programs happen in the fall. We have new program initiatives. We have a Friday morning mat yoga class. We have Saturday morning chair yoga. We have hearing screenings, memory screenings, local author presentations. We're working on a partnership with Forest Park Middle School Literacy Specialist. Our young adult librarian will be going to the middle school and helping the literacy specialist engage students in reading. We have technology classes on library databases, apps, and topics of interest to patrons. One other program we're starting up is a, we're going to have free headshots that will be done by professional photographers. So people can come in and get a professional headshot for, you know, their LinkedIn or any other reason. We have monthly DIY craft programs, monthly cooking programs. And this year, we debuted a FAFSA night with Franklin High School. We worked with their guidance department to offer training and help on the FAFSA website. So we're hoping next year to expand that, maybe even have a whole day where people can come in and get one-on-one help with the FAFSA.
Okay. I'll say it. I'm not embarrassed to say it. What the heck is FAFSA?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the financial aid, so, yeah. Okay, so for everybody out there who doesn't have children, for everybody out there who doesn't have children, the FAFSA is the financial aid online website form that you have to fill out in order to get financial aid in college.
Ah, now I got it.
Sorry, I should have spelled that out.
I don't know if you've got it up here, but you're missing out on the biggest thing, I think, that you've done in the past year.
What's that?
You joined with the civic celebrations for the Christmas.
Oh, no, that's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, wait till the end. Yeah.
It's not, it's not under programming.
It's not under programming. Strategic goal number two is the library is a community hub. The library is the center of the community and will work to foster and grow our role as a community connector. We will strengthen community relationships and increase community perception. We will grow and foster partnerships that help the library achieve its mission and will provide access to trusted and open sources of information. So this is where I did mention the citywide Christmas program. So annual events that we host, and a lot of these, we partner with other organizations to host these. The Memorial Day and Veterans Day programs with American Legion Post 192.
November 11th.
For those who might be listening, November 11th at 11:00 a.m.
I'm sorry, Jennifer.
At the library. National Night Out with the Franklin Police Department. The Health Fair with Franklin Health Department. Drunk or Treat with Volition Franklin and Franklin Health Department. Historical Society events with the Historical Society, obviously. And the citywide Franklin Christmas program with the Civic Celebration Committee. Our meeting and study rooms remain very busy. So far in 2022, we've had 1,233 uses of our meeting and study rooms. So they're busy. Strategic goal three, services and collections. We will increase the use of our services by expanding the library's presence in the community by providing enhanced access to a variety of resources. We will increase the use of our services by expanding the library's presence in the community by providing enhanced access to a variety of resources. The library's resources and collections will meet the needs of the community. We will bring the library to the community through outreach efforts. We will increase active cardholders and use of the collections, and we will increase connections to area schools and senior communities. So some of our new circulating collections that we have at the library is a children's world language collection. We have circulating bakeware. And the idea from the idea for this came from, we were talking about the rise of all the apartments in Franklin, limited space in the kitchen. Wouldn't it be nice to have some of the items that people might use, but not very often? And the library can supply those and they don't have to store them in their homes. So we have create space tools such as a Cricket 3D printer, laminator, and jewelry-making tools among other, a lot of other tools. We have a circulating board games collection. We have the Explorer Passes, Milwaukee County Zoo, Mitchell Park Domes, Betty Brin Children's Museum, Discovery World, and Milwaukee Art Museum. Recently, we were just asked to be a guinea pig for the new state park passes. So we will have, we were one of 20 libraries chosen to partner with the Department of Natural Resources to offer day passes to our state parks. And also new is our Explorer HQ collection, which is, we have a metal detector you can check out, telescope, Dremel, Cricket Joy, and there'll be other things added to that collection. In fact, anybody listening, I'm looking for snowshoes. So if you have snowshoes languishing in your closets that you don't use, the library will be happy to take them off your hands. Strategic goal four, marketing and awareness. We will increase public awareness of the library, its resources, and the importance of the library to the community. So our objectives were to create a marketing plan, promote the library through participation in and hosting of community events, increase the perceived value of being a library cardholder and user of library resources. So how do we market FPL, Franklin Public Library, and its resources? Mainly through our website, monthly in-library newsletter, monthly electronic newsletter, city newsletter, Facebook, Instagram. New is a patron point targeted automated email marketing platform that was purchased by the Milwaukee County Federal Library System for use by its member libraries. So we're going to be trained on that, and that will provide an additional way for us to get the word out to people and what's going on at the library. And also outreach events. Strategic goal five, organizational health. The library will continuously develop and implement well-developed and executed plans to strengthen our staffing, buildings, and grounds, and finances. So our objectives are to have long-term plans for staffing and staff development, building and grounds, and finances, and the development and implementation of ongoing maintenance, preventative maintenance, and capital improvement strategies. Also continued development with of relationships with colleges and universities with accredited library programs to provide internship opportunities and to develop strong relationships with organizations, groups, and other city departments that will help the library accomplish its mission to serve the community. So one of the areas of staffing, I wanted to point out, we have a very high retention rate. The average number of years with Franklin Public Library for current employees is 14 years. The shelters are the exception. If I added the shelters, that number would plummet. So I left them out, you know, because normally a shelve might be a high school student and they have the audacity to leave us and go to college. Our annual employee, we have an annual employee in-service training morning every year. We have an emphasis on continuing education for both the professional and support staff. Our staffing is lean. We have decreased our FTEs over the past few years. We have a partnership with Franklin High School mentorship program. I'm actually mentoring a high school student at the library right now. We have partnerships with Goodwill and the Department of Workforce Development's Division of Vocational Rehab to host temporary work experiences, which have been very successful and have resulted in the hiring of two, two people who are now shelters who work for us. We have a partnership with University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee School of Information Science to host a youth library intern to help with the summer reading program. As far as building and grounds, we've replaced all the study room furniture with flexible tables and seating. We've replaced computer and study table chairs. Our chairs were, all of our furniture is 20 years old, so it's original to the building. It's also fabric. So all the new stuff is vinyl, easy to clean. Roof, parking lot, and building envelope repairs have been made. We've worked with DPW to create a lower maintenance landscaping around the library's monument sign. And we are working with the city on a security system for the library. As far as finances, we've worked with the city's director of finance to move Fund 16's checking account over to the city for increased efficiency. Saves my time and it's saving the time of the people who work at city hall. We worked with, we're working with the city on a capital improvement plan to best use our fund balance. And one of the things I wanted to note about our fund balance is there's a resolution 2,005, 5905, which states that the library fund balance cannot go below $100,000. Currently, our fund balance is at 37% of our appropriations, which is high, but with the cost of everything that's going on, it doesn't take, we have big repairs. So we're growing multiple streams of revenue. For example, our book notebook sales and gift shop, our annual rummage sale, and foundation fundraisers, which also help the library. We do have some challenges. Our personnel and operating costs are increasing at a much higher rate than the share that we get of the property tax revenue. So as you can see, 2021, our property tax revenue decreased 3,300, but our personnel and operating expenses increased by 23,000, a little over 23,000. And then again, 2022, our property tax revenue did increase 10,000, but our personnel and operating expenses increased by 40, almost 41,000.
Alvin.
So Jennifer, you had talked about what you've stated and that the staff is slim. So that personnel and operating expenses was not due to adding employees, it was due to raises?
Oh, yes. Yeah. As part of the class and compensation study done a few years ago, library staff did receive increases to bring them up. And they, some staff continue to receive progress to market, although that's going down.
You may have this in here, but do we have a comparison from years of the library and what the staffing has been over the years?
Well, the high, the high, I'm working on it, but the high in like 2012 was around 17 FTEs, and we're down to 15 FTEs right now.
Okay. Do you remember what year that 20, the 17?
About 2012.
So real early on, so really you're down from.
Yeah.
And there are state recommendations for the community.
State standards.
Right.
Yes, which we are on the low side for the state standards as far as personnel. What's next at FPL? If you haven't seen it, we have a materials locker that was delivered last week, and we're going to be trained on it. But this is a smart locker, so people will be able to come in when the library's closed, they'll be able to come and pick up their holds that we will place in the, in the lockers. So they can, they can do it if they just choose not to come in the library, or if they're not going to be able to get to the library till 9:30 at night or 8:00 in the morning before we open. They can use the smart lockers to get their materials. One of the things in beta testing at some of the libraries in Milwaukee County is self-checkout through our County Cat mobile app. So people theoretically should be able to go and they can use their mobile phone with the County Cat app and check out their materials right there and take them out the door. And then changes in operating hours. We've been, we evaluated over a six-month period this year and have come to the realization that our operating hours may not be meeting the needs of our users. So we are looking at that and expect that there could be changes in 2023. Anybody have any questions?
Questions from the council? I do have one statement. In your capital fund, you mentioned that it's 37%. That's correct. It's 30% of your operating budget. Your current balance, though, is 647,000, 641.
Yeah, we've been looking.
Bay or math? So there's lots of money there, but you're right, we got to be careful with it. Questions? Alvin with them.
This was all really great information, but when, and we haven't gotten to the budget yet. But I would like to see the information for the budget and the staffing in our budget. I, I realize that they have their own separate powers under the state rules, but we still support the library and give them funding. And I think it's really important for the community to understand all those figures about budgeting and staffing. And I had looked through, Jennifer, just for your knowledge, that in 2014, all of your budget information was in there. And I don't remember exactly when you came in, but every single year from 2014 to 2020, all of the information about your budget and staffing was in there. But then it just, everything came out in 2021 and also was not in this year. So just for the public's knowledge and because you provide so many great programs, I think it would be important to keep that in our budget when it goes out for a public hearing.
So the library budget has, to my knowledge, has not ever been in the working document of the budget, but it always and continues to be in the published budget.
I'm going to have to correct that because every, every working document I have in my.
I can only repeat what I've, what I've heard, but I can tell you it was, this is my third budget season and it's never been included.
Yeah, it came out in 2021, so 2022, and now we're into 2023. So yes, that would be correct. Since 2021, in that budget is when it came out. It's always been in there in great detail, as well as some of the other departments that are not in the budget, that have always been in the budget, which is concerning to me. But that's a different topic and I don't want to, you know, put any.
Well, understand there's timing involved in all of this. If we don't get the budget materials from those various departments and funds in time to put it in your book when we give it to you two weeks ago, not the book unless you put it there. So anyway, okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time. We appreciate your time.
And don't forget trunk or treat, but that's full, right? I think it's full up.
Trunk or treat is full, but we are looking at our numbers and there's a possibility we may open up some more spots because it filled up pretty quickly.
Excellent. And the Veterans Day event on November 11th at 11 o'clock only lasts about a half hour, but you can get to meet some of our veterans. And then the Christmas festivities is December 3rd.
December 3rd, yep. Lot of, lot of stuff coming up.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion received and placed on file? Even though we don't have anything? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have some people in the audience that need to be taken care of, so if we can move through these, it'd be great. G eight, the Resolution to our change order number three for asphalt work for Hickory Street improvements of $30,238.45.
Second.
Matt, Alvin and Hanneman.
Like to get an explanation. I haven't had a chance to read through all the changes that were put here at our place tonight. So I just like, as I'm reading down at the bottom, one exact, there's something that is misspelled. So I'm, I just want a clarification.
So. I misspoke.
Aunties, when the exact aunties are known.
Okay.
But.
So.
What's changed from the one that was in our packet?
So the one that was in your packet told you this was coming. We didn't have any numbers yet. So we now have numbers. The whole idea is that we plan to get it paved this year. The contractor could do it. Staff would prefer that we hold off on the final surface until next spring. So now we have some numbers and it's in a range of 30,238. That's, that's the range. And once we know that for sure, then we'll, we'll actually quantify the, the actual change order. But this would be a work change directive.
Okay. So as I'm reading, an estimate, an estimated quantities that are computed to be in the range of 427,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
489.50 to 30,238.45. And then I'm not understanding that.
Okay. I'm sorry, it was, there was an extra four in there. Should be 27, should be somewhere in the range of 27,000 to 30,000. Sorry.
Okay. Awesome.
This was a.
And so that should probably say when exact quantities are known, the change order.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Got it.
And for the council, I've asked the city engineer to clarify the language on the definition of surface.
So, so a base course is the rough aggregate in the asphalt mix, but it's still drivable. The final surface is the final two inches that will be put on it.
The same as we do for residential subdivisions. Alvin and Hope for.
Thank you. So obviously, if we do this, any price increases, this covers us, correct?
Correct. We're going to lock in the, you know, prices.
I suppose we're not fortunate enough to be able to, if for some reason paving prices go down, to get a credit?
It doesn't work that way. We can get a price, yeah, so.
Got to ask.
Got to ask.
Okay. The motion was made by Alvin Barber, seconded by Alvin Hope for. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, I do agree with you, however, timing is what timing is on this thing. G nine is an ordinance to amend 207-21 of the code for special assessments of water main laterals. Mr. City Engineer.
So we've got a lot of water projects in the works right now, projects coming up. Historically, when the city has done a water project, we generally have some people ask, can we put a water service in for some time in the future? We've generally said no. Typically, those were copper lines. And when you set copper in the, in the ground that doesn't get used, it tends to go bad. So then when somebody does want to use it, it's not usable. With today's products, they're more, I would say, plastic-based products, and we don't anticipate that they'll deteriorate. So we would like to install those at the time that the water main is installed. And the reason why is that if you, so for example, Ryan Road or Lover's Lane or whichever, if you don't install it now, somebody five years or 10 years down the road wants to dig into the road, and then you've got a pothole patch forever and ever you have to maintain. It'd be much easier if we could do it all at once, have a contractor under this contract, make sure that the road is repaired properly all at one time, and so forth. So that's why staff has suggested that we would like to see us start installing services for everyone. It will make it a little more expensive for folks that are, a project more expensive because we have to, and it depends on the road. It could be a couple of thousand dollars. It could be $10,000 depending on which road and this side, that side, or so forth. So this was discussed at the Board of Water Commissioners. They made some changes to what staff had an idea with. And long story short, we'd like to add to the municipal code, all non-divisible developable lots shall have a water main lateral installed when a water main is extended. And note that non-divisible developable lots, that's already defined or already used extensively in the code. And then another thing that the, or that the Board of Water Commissioners asked us to do was to average the cost. So if you recall some of the conversations we've had, whether it be Minnesota or Lover's Lane. Lane, we had an estimate if you were same side or opposite side, because if the water main were on your side, it's cheaper than on the other side. So where our commissioners felt that it would be fair, if you will, to average it out, so, so we will average that out and that will be part of the engineering document when I actually do the report. I'll add up all the, the services and based on the bid and then average them. So it doesn't matter if it's water mains on your side or the opposite side. Everyone will be charged the same for every service. So the average cost of the accepted contract bid quotations of all water main services laterals on the project. So that's the change we'd like to make to municipal code 207-21.
Alderman Holfer and then Alderman Will.
I appreciate what you're trying to do and I can see that at some point in the future, there may be some potential payback code maintenance-wise and things like that. We have questions with, you said in some of the areas, you're going to have to estimate how many services there may be depending on the size and location and things like that.
Well, we estimate in the very beginning, but once we actually get bids, we'll know an exact amount. So then it'll be a, we'll know that we have 23, you know, lots and we'll take each one of those and, and we'll, we'll average them together.
Where I have a problem is because not everybody will hook up to this.
Correct.
And as a resident, I have a difficult time when I'm being asked to pay for engineering and inspection fees and all of these things for something that I'm not going to use. If I'm going to use it, then I would say, okay, I'm willing to pay that. But if I say, you know, I'm going to be here 20 years, I'm never going to hook up to the water. I don't want to pay for that. I understand there's a cost to the city for doing that, but we're already paying to have the engineers and the inspectors and such there. So that personally, I have a hard time with that.
Alderman.
Same comment. I, I guess I'm, do you typically just stub to the property line anyway?
No.
Okay, so what you're talking about is just to stub to the property line and who knows how far that can be depending on.
Right, it could be a couple of feet, it could be 50 feet.
Right. And then you said when you get bids, you'll have more of an idea. So how will that affect like the Minnesota project where you already have the bids and you already gave them estimates and now we're coming in with this?
So, yeah, so if you read the engineering report that was developed, it was developed pre-bidding. Now, once the project has been bid, and in fact, we're going to actually wait till we get into the project, before we finish the, the project, then everyone will be given exactly the quantities and the values. Minnesota won't matter because we maxed out the maximum part for everyone. But Lover's Lane, that'll make a big difference because it's a state highway, so.
So on Lover's Lane, those people haven't gotten any supposed even estimates yet?
Yeah, they, they received an estimate when we had the preliminary, what do we call it? You, I made a presentation on the whole project and I prepared a report. And so you decided that yes, we were going to proceed with the project and we were going to assess for the project.
Well, how far out are we on this, I mean, this big, how far are we on the water tower? Or when are we bidding that?
I don't remember the exact dates. I don't have them here in front of me, but we're bidding the water main out of mid-November and I think December 1st is when we actually bid the water tower.
December 1st, we're going to put it out for bid?
I can get that date to you. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall. It, it's already out to bid, but we're going to collect bids. We're going to collect bids first on, on the, the water main and a couple of weeks later, we'll collect bids on the water tower.
The water tower went out to bid?
Yes.
Did we approve that?
You did.
Okay.
That was part of the same meeting where we talked about the entire project.
Okay, and so, well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out timing. How much timing? I wasn't even aware that we went out for bid on the water tower.
But again, Alderman, we're not talking about the water tower. This is the general policy.
Well, we're talking about, I'm making the connection between the timing on the water project and how much time you need with this, because I'm actually not comfortable with this right now. I just think that the comments that Alderman Holfer had and, and the information that's here about making educated guesses, I think this, if you could define this a little more, I could be more in favor of it. But having people pay for something that they may never use is a different policy than we've always had.
Not necessarily. I would suggest to you that Lover's Lane is the perfect example and even Ryan Road, some folks, well, not Ryan Road because they won't be assessed for that. So Lover's Lane will be assessed for it. There are some people who say that they will never connect to it. However, it does impact the value of their property. So I would tell you that when someone goes to sell their property and they find out that there's not only a water main, but a water service available, that does affect generally appreciative, the value of their, of their property.
For those that have no intentions of selling and on wells, it's a cost that it's really hard for people right now to make ends where. I'm just not sure that this is the right time to implement this right now. And I, there were so many different options that said we'd be guessing and we'd make an, you know, educated guess. I just, I'd like it to be more clearly defined on who's going to get, what parcels it's going to affect, who's going to be affected.
So it would, if I could answer that, it would affect the ones that are being assessed for the project. And if they're on a non-divisible developable lot.
And then lots that are.
If there are a very large lot that could be divisible, we will not install a service for them because it would just be a pure guess and could be a wrong guess of where a house may be.
Right, and that, there's where I'm kind of having the problem is making a guess and then putting a calculation in of people paying for this water line. And then your guess wasn't right and then some people had to share that expense. I don't know.
This is very similar to the current situation. We're just making sure we put services in there so we can protect the road in future.
Alderman Nelson.
Glenn.
Director of Engineering. Director of Administration.
Thank you for putting this together and I understand where your head is in this and I think it's in the right place. For example, there's two gentlemen here tonight, Mr. Benny, Mr. Belzrowski of our district, and I've gotten numerous calls regarding, again, the questions come up when they see this, is am I getting special assessed? Am I getting, you know, I mean, so I'm just saying in general, depending, because we've got so much going on in our city, which is a good thing. We've got so many projects going on, which is a good thing. A lot of communities would love to have what we've got going on, but we've got to make sure that, that, I guess, as, as much as we can convey, as much as we can predict accurately, and not to echo my counterparts, but I will, but that's, they're, they're spot on with just making that thing. So I, we're not hammering on you. We're just looking to obviously make the communication process as transparent and as upfront as we can. So we're not getting second guessed and you're not getting a flood of calls hammering on you and protesting outside your office so we can all be on the same page. Thank you.
So, so to answer that question, this, this does not affect who gets assessed and who does not get assessed for a water main project. This only says that when you do a project, whether it, even the ones that are not being assessed for it, a private developer would still install a, a service for it, for a And the only way, so, so to make it clear, the only way that people on Ryan Road would ever pay for this is if they connect within 10 years, that there's a, a payback situation for a, when a developer installs a water main. When the city does it as part of a city-funded project, which is what Lover's Lane would be in, in Minnesota, then yes, they would be assessed for a service. And this changes a little bit how we assess for the service.
Well, I got to jump in here because the folks on Ryan Road, the water's going in right now.
Correct. That's why it's important to talk about this now. So the folks on Ryan Road would not be.
Trying to be clarified. I'm just trying to be clear because we all know how rumors get started in the city.
I understand. Ryan Road is being developed through the TID, which is, I'm sorry.
So this may affect Ryan Road if there was an agreement to assess them. If the individual homeowner, if this passes, the individual homeowner on Ryan Road could say, I'm going to be smart, I'm going to put a lateral in right now, whether they get assessed for it or not. They may, they may do that if this passes. Similarly on Highway 100, similarly on 50th, well, that going in, whatever. I don't want to get into that conversation. But anyway, Director of Administration, but I'm going to probably circumvent her. I'm going to jump in here in the middle. I, I would urge option one. I understand where the staff is at on this. I appreciate the initiative and the, and the desire to protect our roadways, but this is a lot of administrative work, long-term, that I don't know that we really want to participate in for the benefit we're getting. I, I don't know what we're doing for road cuts, but I can't imagine there's that many in the city, but. Madam Director.
Just a couple of thoughts. One thing that we're not talking about that everybody should just be really clear on is if there's a project that costs an extra $148,000 because of this new policy, somebody has to pay for it. And if it's, if the homeowners aren't going to pay for it for 22 years, somebody has to pay for it. I think there's, I, I've seen this, these kinds of things happen in a lot of communities and it's, it's certainly a good thing, but there's some things left undone. I mean, it talks about the bid price quotation. First of all, bid prices and quotations are two different things, but how do you deal with a change order? We have change orders on projects all the time. Who's going to pay for that? Is the city going to be on the hook for those extra B's? If you're putting, if, if you're all your street have laterals already, but your streets do not, that means everybody gets to pay for yours because you don't have one. Those folks might have already paid for them. So if we were starting a city from scratch, it would be a very easy policy to put in place, but because we're not, it's just, this is a huge policy decision for the council. And I get it that the Board of Water Commissioners does their thing, but with the funds where they're at and the council being where the buck stops, I, I think this is a big policy that the council should consider.
And, and again, I appreciate the staff's initiative here. It needs more thought. Alderman, Haneman.
And I agree with many of the comments that have already been said here, especially my concern with the 16% for administrative engineering and inspection fees that are proposed. I think that's pretty steep on top of a already very steep bill for those who would ultimately be assessed. I tend to agree with the mayor. I'm preferring option A, what we already have in place with our assessment methods. But I think I would only go with the Board of Water Commissioners' recommendation if we were to only do the 16% administrative engineering inspection fees for those who would choose to ultimately connect. So those who would use the service would pay those fees.
Okay, let's draw this to a close because we've got other things to do. Okay, motion to table for two months, seconded by Alderman Nelson. Do you want any action done on it in those two months? Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Just clarify it. Show us more about how the costs are going to affect the people and the city's budget and give us more benefits and, and maybe weave out some of these options because there's just too many options there that have too many guesses in them on what might happen. So if you can pare it down and make it cleaner and so it applies more across the board, that would be great.
Is that okay, Alderman Nelson? I would suggest also that in the policy, if there's a water project and this does not get enacted, that staff would have the ability to authorize unused laterals of certain material be installed at the time of the project. Because right now, you can't, I don't believe. I don't believe you can authorize a non-used lateral.
Correct.
So that would fix part of this.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Holfer, sorry.
I would personally like to see this come back, perhaps a committee of the whole where we have more time to discuss it in detail before it goes to a vote.
Just as long as you don't complain about the committee of the whole meeting. For sure. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G10 is a change order, 6,570 bucks for additions to the street improve maintenance program. It costs, their motion.
Second.
Well, I'm going to do Nelson and Barber this time. Sorry. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we hold G11?
Sure.
And G12, I'm sensitive to our appointee here. With us, you want to do G14? Gary? And then we'll do Karen.
We're requesting that G14 be held at this time.
Without objection, let's move to G15, appointment of Karen Castinson as the new Director of Clerk Services. Is there an interest in going into closed session? If not, we'll have Karen come up and tell us a little bit about herself. Karen, please join us. Have a seat. I'd like the council to meet Karen Castinson, currently the Clerk Treasurer for Clerk Finance of the City of South Milwaukee.
Yes.
Karen, welcome. I appreciate you coming in tonight and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, I am the Clerk Comptroller for the City of South Milwaukee currently. I have been in government, finance and the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office for about 20 years now. I've been in small communities and I've been in larger communities and I'm looking to get more centralized in the Clerk's Department, kind of trying to get out of the finance area and, and be more specific to the Clerk's duties. I guess that's about all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
The interview committee, Karen went through three or four, seven interviews?
10, 12.
Alderman, Alderman Holfer joined us for an interview, as did Alderman Haneman. So this is our recommendation, my appointment. And questions for Karen? Alderman Barber.
Given that your background has been mostly in, in the comptroller finance area, how strong are you on running an election?
Well, lately, I'm not so sure. Everything has changed so much, but I, I've been in the Clerk's Office now for three and a half years, been through several elections. Thankfully, we'll have some time with Sandy and, and get her expertise on everything. But I think with the experience that I've had in the last three years and then prior to this, in some smaller elections, in some smaller communities, I, I feel fairly confident that I will be able to handle it just, just fine.
Another quick question on your, your leadership style and development style with staff.
Yes.
How would you characterize what you do?
I'm a very hands-on manager. I am in the trenches with all my staff currently. We do a lot of trainings together. We do a lot of meetings together. We, we, I'm very helpful in the Clerk's area. I like to be there and be upfront and be visible to not just my staff, but the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
I know one of the things that I've had in going into my, you know, last year here, second term, was whenever we get stumped, I'd call Madam Clerk. And she is all-knowing. And you kind of get used to that.
Yes.
You know, whenever you're, oh, I'll call Madam Clerk. And then, oh yeah, it's on page 84, paragraph three, blah, 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 or oh no, this is what you do. So, and I know this is, is, this is a new position for you and I understand that you're going to be learning from what I consider the best. And just so, you know, there's going to be times that we try to not, you know, we, it's very dependent upon because obviously we are part-time.
Right.
We are not here that often. And when we are asked and we need things, we often go. And I, I'll speak for myself, I do. And it's been excellent working with, with Sandy over the years. years. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have to agree with you. We all come to Sandy when we need something because she does have that experience, so it is going to be big shoes to fill.
Anyone else? Alderman Holfer.
I don't know if you know that a lot of her duties include helping the Licensing Committee. Do you have some experience in that? Because we really count on the staff there. Would plan to continue that assistance and...
Yes, yes. I do have licensing experience. I've done licensing in most of the communities I've been in. I realize that Franklin is going to be a lot larger, a lot larger scale, which is another reason I'm happy to be here with Sandy for a month and a half at least and get some of her expertise.
She gave us a very complicated breakdown of the licensing. And she has it all there, but it's going to take a while to catch on to it, so.
I can imagine.
Yeah. But it's good to know that you'll continue on with that because we do really depend on that department for assistance and that.
Right.
Good.
There are motion to approve the appointment. So we're going to do Barber and Holfer. You're a little late, Sherry. Sorry. Let's do a roll call, Madam Clerk. Let's do a roll call because the law says we do.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Alderman Eichman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absents, no abstentions. Welcome aboard, Karen. We'll see you on November the 14th.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
First appointment was Dana and a stack of papers.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sandy.
I just would like to thank the council for, first of all, the kind words, but for this election in Karen, I think you made a wise decision, and I'll be happy to share everything I know.
Great.
Good and bad.
Good to hear.
Okay. Welcome, Karen. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
You can stick around for us and me if you want.
I'll stick around for a while.
Okay, move back to G11. Recommendation for employee benefit coverages, carriers, premium shares, et cetera, et cetera, for the health insurance. Madam Director of Administration.
Thank you. This item was discussed at the Personnel Committee in a lot of detail yesterday. We did go through each of the items, and the committee recommended that council approve this unanimously. I will tell you, there's a lot of items in this list. All the items that are not bolded are the same as this year. I'm just going to run through those real quickly so we're all on the same page. We would be going with, continuing on with UMR as our third-party administrator for the health insurance plan, and that includes the Health Reimbursement Arrangement Program Administration, as well as the COBRA Program Administration. No changes to the overall premiums for health insurance or the employee premium shares for health insurance in 2023. We are recommending changing to a primary care model for the health insurance premium incentive. What that means is today, this year, employees are required to do what's called a health risk assessment. It's a questionnaire, self-reporting questionnaire, as well as biometrics testing or blood work. We're recommending to go away from that, and basically, it would be a certification from the employee and the spouse to get the preferred or the wellness rate for health insurance, to have a visit with their healthcare provider, an age and gender-specific physical and corresponding blood work. We found that as we go through doing the biometrics and the self-reporting, there are some shortcomings with that. We believe the best option for prevention and maintenance of private issues between an employee or their spouse and their own provider would be the way to go, and so we would just be asking for no personal health information, just the certification that those items were done. We are recommending to continue on with the Health Savings Account contributions. That's for a single plan, $750 per year, and for a family plan, $1,500. We do have a Health Savings Account agreement with Associated Bank. That's not required for employees, but this agreement allows employees to have their accounts at that institution at no cost, which is just a benefit. So if they choose to go through Associated Bank, which is the city's preferred provider, it's no cost. If they're wanting to go to their own financial institution, that's just fine as well. We are recommending to stay with the Health Reimbursement Arrangement for 2023. That would be, as soon as the employees and their families hit certain points, for a single plan, that would be $1,500. For a family plan, that would be $3,000. Again, this is an IRS rule that the access point used to be $2,800 for a family plan. In 2022, it is becoming $3,000 in 2023, so we don't have control over that piece. But once employees hit those costs, the city would pay that additional amount, $1,250 for a single plan, $2,500 for a family. It is a pretty convoluted health plan. You know, there's a lot of layers to it, but what we're finding is it's really helping because the employees that are being burdened the most are the ones with the higher health claims. And so what this does is this helps those people that have higher costs. It doesn't put money in bank accounts that, you know, people may or may not use. So it's been really good for the needs of the city. We are requesting to stay with Nice Healthcare. Nice Healthcare is a mobile-type clinic. They start all their services virtually, but the city basically pays one rate, $33 in 2023. It'll be $33 per employee per month, so just less than $400. And employees would be able to go for acute issues, chronics, maintenance. There's 550 prescriptions that are covered with no copay or out-of-pocket. There's physical therapy, mental health, and there's just blood work, x-rays, a lot of imaging. So it's basically a way to try to encourage a more cost-effective way to handle some of those issues that can be handled that way and not have them hit our health insurance plan. These, all the providers at Nice Healthcare are either physicians assistants or nurse practitioners, so they're very qualified. A lot of us see those people in our doctors' offices as well these days. So that would be, excuse me? Home more work, yeah. It started, usually starts out with a virtual, and then they will come, yeah, if you have something here, you know, I cut my arm and I want them to come and take a look at it, they'll come right here to City Hall and take care of that, any place in the five-county Milwaukee area. We are requesting to continue with Go Through 65 to encourage wellness activities. This year, that's required as part of the health premium incentive. It's been a bit clumsy as far as getting the different providers to work together. That's part of the reason to go for the primary care model, in addition to that important provider touch. But this is more of a inadital, if you will, preventative-type work. If people are active in exercising and doing preventative care, they can get different points for that and earn rewards. It's a very low-cost wellness program that some of our employees really like. Continue on with Serviu RX as the Pharmacy Benefit Manager. This will be, 23 would be our third year with them. Continuous Symmetra, who's our current Provider Administrator of our Stop Loss Protection. That's our stopgap measure for health insurance when we get to have large claims. It's a 4.53% increase, however, that's a very good increase, especially for the claims experience we've been having, and we've been very satisfied with Symmetra.
Excuse me, one second. People may not understand stop loss and what that is. We provide a payment for health insurance out of city funds. This is an insurance plan on top of our payment that, it hasn't stops the loss at a specified dollar amount. Above that is paid for by the insurance. So that's a protection for the city.
It's a bit of reinsurance, you might say. We're continuing on, we're requesting to continue on with Prudential. They handle the city's life insurance policy, as well as long-term and short-term disability. Those, that agreement goes through 2024. Continue on with Delta Dental as a third-party administrator for the city's self-funded dental plan. This would be the second year of that agreement, goes through 2024. Continue on with VSP as the provider for the city's voluntary vision plan. It is an employee-paid benefit, but we do have quite a few employees and their families using it, and it's a very inexpensive program. We are continuing on with the Flex Spending Plan, which is just dependent care, standard health care, and then for those in the HSA program, limited health care. It's just a way to have some tax advantages to some of that medical spending. Continue on with USI Benefit Resource Center at no cost for employees. It's just another option for them to get customer service assistance, to find providers, to deal with billing, benefit information. They assist us with our open enrollment process. They have all of our plan documents and some videos and tutorials, et cetera. We have had some really good luck this year with some of our employees using that. So those are the requests for 2023 that we're hoping the council will concur with.
Questions for the council? Barber and Nelson. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G12, again, Madam Director of Administration. Finance Committee recommended changes to the mayor's recommended budget.
So as everyone is aware, the budget was released on October 4th. The Finance Committee had three meetings on the topic, a couple that were two-plus hours, one that was more than three hours. They were able to hear from all the department heads about what they had going in the departments, operating-related capital items, functioning of the department, had a chance to have some good back-and-forth with the departments. I think those on the Finance Committee would tell you it's been a very beneficial experience to go through and really just talk about that. All of those audios are on the city's website, so anybody that's interested in listening to them certainly can. On the last night, Finance Director and I spent a lot of time going through capital funds, equipment replacement, the TIDS, debt service. We talked about, you know, project status. We talked about tax rate, self-insurance fund, and the valuation, et cetera. So the Finance Committee has, you know, the analysis section of the council action sheet will show you what the Finance Committee actually did. We can just maybe go through fund by fund. Fund 61 was basically, our sewer budget was in progress at the time the budget was released. There were some updates to it. We needed to go through and get that taken care of, get it completed, and that is what that item is. Fund 25, the Health Department Fund, the budget was complete at the time of the release. However, the revenues and expenditures were not carried forward from the Department Request column to the mayor's recommended. This was updated and provided to the Finance Committee. And you have pages, in addition to the ones in your packet, you also have places, pages at your chairs, so you are able to put those into your budget book. We have highlighted all the changes, so you know what's different from the pages you're removing, in case you wanted to check that along the way. Fund 22 is the Utility Improvement Fund. Again, changes clearly identified. Fund 22, 27, and 51, which are the next three, those were held for staff release, for staff review after the release of the budget. Those were subsequently completed and, again, discussed in detail with the Finance Committee. So that's Fund 22, Utility Development. Fund 27, Development. Fund 51, Special Assessment. The Fund 75 is a self-insurance fund. That's the fund that you just saw attached to the prior item. It's also, again, at your chairs, that it was simply just a matter of timing, and we wanted to work through that with the Finance Committee. So that is now finalized with the Finance Committee, or, I'm sorry, with the Personnel Committee, and the Finance Committee reviewed it as well. And then, one thing that's not listed in the council action sheet that I just want to mention is, over the last couple of days, from the 11th until now, the Finance Director and I have been going through the 2022 estimates and refining those numbers so that they would be realistic for the hearing notice. I will tell you, they're still pretty conservative, so I think we're in a really good place as far as getting to the hearing notice, which is due. It was actually due, we were going to have a special council meeting last Thursday. There were a number of council members that couldn't make it. So we worked with the clerk and talked to the newspaper, and they said we were able to submit a draft yesterday, knowing that we can update it tomorrow if that's required. And so we do have those draft hearing notices at your places as well. You might notice the hearing notice looks a little different than it did last year. Last year, it was about six or eight pages long. The year before that, it was actually a one-pager, but last year, it cost us about $2,500 to publish it. This time, again, getting all of the required documentation in, letting our citizens and taxpayers know where they can find the budget, how they can go through the detail. It is fully on our website. Those recommended changes are on our website already as recommended changes. If the council does indeed approve those tonight, we'll go ahead and replace the pages in the budget book so that everybody, as they're looking through the budget and reviewing it, will be able to see that. And then even from this point out, there's still one entire month for the council to make any changes, ask questions. We will have this as well on the November 1st agenda, as well as the, we'll do a little presentation for the hearing on the 15th, and then ask for council consideration on that day. So what we're looking for tonight is to amend the mayor's budget, recommended budget, which would then turn it into what we call the Proposed Budget for the city, and go ahead and complete that hearing notice so that the hearing notice, it's a Class 1 notice published once, but it has to be out there 15 days before the hearing happens.
And here's another chance. You've got the brains here. Questions for staff? Holfer then Wilhelm.
Question for city engineer. In the Capital Improvement Fund, there's years allocated for $50,000 a year for curb and gutter replacement repairs. When you do a major street, like you did Beacon Hill, and you did the pavement and the curb and gutter, is that the curb and gutter repair you're talking about, or is that allocated for where people just have damaged, broken curb, and you're not doing anything for the road? So it was explained during the Finance Committee that, because I questioned why there wasn't $50,000 in for next year, and I was explained that it was rolled into the additional funds that you're getting. So I would make a motion that you allocate $50,000 of that larger amount for curb and gutter repair. Additionally, if there's any unused funds from this year, I would like that added to that for next year if that work doesn't get done this year, because I know that we had some folks that we were talking to.
So, yeah, so when we do our, I would say, paving program, those take priority. We have to do those as we're doing the major roads. So there are other curb and gutters and throughout, and then they, we have ADA issues that we need to work on too when they come up. That's required. We've got to put the funds.
We're getting into winter, so you're picking up chunks of concrete with the snowblower. Holes are filling with ice, and people have to walk to get to the mailbox and things like that. So I'd like to make sure that we're not just continually kicking it down the road, that we get some of this taken care of.
I think we've finished up that account, but I can check on that.
Do we have what we need? You got both sides of the equation?
Well...
You got the revenue and the expense?
He does.
He mentioned coming out.
That item is simply, the $1.5 million for the street program would be then technically $1.45 million for the street program, $50,000 for the curb and gutter.
Okay.
Which is only about 800 some feet. That's what?
And is that a motion?
It was a motion.
So we have a format for motions to change the budget. Want to use...
Motion is approved.
That'll be okay?
Yep.
And was there a second to that motion? Seconded by Alderman Wilhelm. In essence, it's not increasing any costs, it's just moving some money out of there.
And it's really all right in the same account. It would just be a different identification. Yep, a little clarity.
Which, by the way, for the council, we do allow a lot of that anyway, but it's fine. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Wilhelm. Are you done, Alderman?
Yes.
I didn't come prepared to make changes to the budget because the item on the agenda is the Finance Committee's recommended changes to the budget. So had I known there would be and allowed more of that, I might have been more prepared for that. And then I've got these, all these new figures here that were dropped in front of me, which I, everyone has the same packet, so none of us have looked at, there has to be hundreds of highlighted changes in these figures. And the documents here on the report and the action sheet say, please note that if these changes are authorized by the council, the budget will go from being identified, as Director of Administration said, as the mayor's recommended budget, to the proposed budget. So you're basically asking us to vote on turning this recommended budget into proposed budget with all of these new figures because we have future time, but I have, I kind of wish we had more time to go through that, but a couple of things that I see that are missing in the recommended budget is, like I said, the library board information, at least, like the staff amount and what we're giving, the basic information that has always been in there, as back as 2014 I looked, it was always in the budget, and 14 through 2020, it was in. Also, the Tourism Commission, when it first created, that was in for three years in a row, and that came out. And I really have no update or ideas about what the tourism... And I really have no update or ideas about what the Tourism Commission, what they're spending money on, what they're funding they're getting. And I know that I have constituents asking those questions, and I have no information on that. Also, in the Water Department, which has always been in the budget, it's also listed as not applicable. The Water Department is one of what's going to lead to some of our biggest debt coming up, and I believe that it's extremely important that we understand that, given that we're sitting in 2021 at $68 million in debt in our off-year, which we weren't supposed to do any debt this year. We're going to end up with 6.75 million in borrowing for projects, most of them water projects and distribution lines, which is another good reason it needs to be within this public budget when it goes out. Also, we have more debt planned for 2023. In a year that would be, this coming year, would be our $2 million every other year bond or loans that we take out. We're going to do another 6.3 million. So in the total of two years, what we typically do, $2 million of borrowing, we're going to do about 13 million, and a lot of that is water-related. So please, show the public, show all of us what's going on with the water budget. Put it in the budget, put the library, the tourism, and the water figures back in the budget before it goes out. That would be my motion, is to include those before it goes out. And then, coming up on the next item, we're going to be doing the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You just made a motion.
Yes.
First of all, I don't know that that motion can be accomplished, because the Tourism Commission sets their own budget. They haven't met. They will be, but we don't have their budget. This needs to be published tomorrow to meet our deadlines. So, you know, you guys can make the motion, but I don't know how we can achieve it. Madam Director of Administration.
Well, since I do have a motion on the floor, and I, it would be nice if we did the typical procedure where, you know, we see if there's a second, and then we try to discuss it.
So just a couple of updates. I apologize. The way I was trained on the budget here from the prior Finance Director was water, library, and tourism don't go in the draft budget. I hear you loud and clear, and it will be in there in the future, but as the mayor said, there's not a whole lot I can do. I can't set a tourism budget, and I can't set a library budget. We are going to be working, we have been working with the library board and the library director to make sure that we get that in a good position. We've, like I said, we've been working on it for quite some time. Tourism, I'm hoping, is going to meet soon, and that's going to be there. Water was actually presented their budget tonight at the Board of Water Commissioners Meeting, and that actually is in the hearing notice, because I feel the same way you do. I want to get as much in that hearing notice as we can. But I don't think we can actually do that whole thing. In regard to the debt, I understand what you're saying about the 2 million, but the 2 million is only for general fund debt every other year. This council has borrowed, I don't know, three years ago, 27 million. Last year, 6 million, 9 million. There's been millions and millions of dollars borrowed in off-years for specific purposes, TIDS, utilities, et cetera. So the general fund borrowing that you're referring to is 2 million every other year, and that's basically for capital projects. And the recommendation in '23 is actually only about 1.5, 1.6 million, and some of it's going to what you call that extra borrowing.
Is there a second, Alderman Wilhelm's motion, which we're not real clear on it? All right. There is no second, Alderman Wilhelm's motion, discussion.
I didn't think my motion was recognized, so just move on to the next thing, and she's understanding what I'm asking for, so.
Alderman Nelson.
Just a quick question. And so, we will be able to get that information from the library and such before we do the final vote, correct?
So, so what, by adding this, yeah, by adding these pages, you could come back at the next meeting on November 1st, or have a special meeting if you wanted, or November 15th, and say, everything we said yes to today, we want to take out. You can make all of those changes. What these papers in front of you are doing is they're attempting to make the budget as complete as we can.
Agreed.
Or we notice it to the public. But again, that doesn't prevent anybody from making changes, asking questions. The offer is always open to all of you. Both the Finance Director and myself are going to be available. We're going to answer you the same day. We're going to work with the public, any questions we get, the Finance Committee, any city committee, and we're going to, we're committed to getting this done.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman.
And I just have to jump ahead to G-13 to get my question answered on this. So G-13 is a transfer of $260,000 for the water area over by Marquette in Minnesota. So, since we haven't made this transfer, is, do you know if that's already in the budget somewhere?
It's in the 2022 budget, so it's going from one line, i.e. the DPW design, to another line. So it is in there. We assumed it was going to be spent. At this time, when we do our budget estimates, we're pretty conservative on those. We're going to come back here in the next couple months and talk about, you know, how we're going to end the year and what needs to be carried over. Council, those would just be recommendations to the council, and the council would do that. Short answer is yes, it's in the 22 budget, and the funds are available, so there'd be no additional.
It's in the 22, but he's not recommending the project be done until next year, so.
But that's okay, because if the council approves the budget amendment, then it would be carried over into the next year. Capital funds work a little bit different than the general fund. General funds expire at the end of every year. Capital funds, we basically have to expire them.
Especially if you have a bid and you've accepted the bid.
Exactly.
And that's what I want to make sure, that it gets carried over.
Yep, just like we carried that money over for Marquette, we'll do that same exact thing.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah. So motion, amend the 2023 mayor's recommended budget for revenues and expenditures as detailed herein and attached schedules to be included in the proposed budget, which will now be called the proposed budget for the public hearing scheduled for November 15th, and publish it. Okay, we're going to do Barbara and Hope for, sorry. Let's do a roll call on this, please.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absences, no abstentions. G-13 is an ordinance to amend 2021-2486, an ordinance adopting the 22 annual budget for the Capital Improvement Fund. The internal transfer of the fund, $260,000 of engineering capital funds moved to the street improvement funds.
So moved.
Second.
Nelson and Eichman.
I think I have to have some clarification on this motion.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
The motion says the engineering capital funds? That's not correct language. It's not engineering capital funds. Wouldn't it be the strike engineering capital improvement funds?
Engineering is really just referring to the department.
I, well, I know. So I wish I would have been able to make the motion and correct the motion, because it's, it doesn't make any sense. Also, is it going to the street improvement fund? Because this is a water facility.
So, yes, so it's, this is not the, this is not for water, correct? This is general fund?
Sorry, how was it?
This is the water.
So the, no, this is not the water fund. Water fund is 65. 46 is the capital projects, the large items that we do. 47 is the street replacement. So the DPW facility right now is sitting in 46. The, this road is, so the question is for the City Engineer, the additional funds that are needed, are they going to be borne by the utilities, or are they going to be borne by the street improvement fund? We're under the impression it's the street improvement.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're going to do the water project under the street improvement fund?
We would not do the water project, not the water piece of it.
Using both funds.
Yes. It, this would be the general fund piece of it, the capital fund piece of it, not the water piece.
So this is just part of the bid at 260, and you're using part of the bid, and the other part of the bid you're taking from your water funds. So that's why you're taking the street improvement.
There was 200,000 budgeted for that project, and I believe it was special assessment 60,000, water utility fund 70, and the other 70 of general. So we need much more in general.
So the maker of the motion, could you please amend it to strike out engineering and put in capital improvement funds?
How about this? I'll just withdraw my motion if you'd like to make the motion. Your district, I just wanted to get things rolling with the street improvement.
Yeah, I withdraw mine, second.
So I'll make the same motion here, except striking engineering and inserting improvement. So it reads, motion to adopt the ordinance, an ordinance to amend 2021-2486, an ordinance adopting the 2022 annual budget for the capital improvement fund to transfer 260,000 of capital improvement funds to the street improvement fund.
Second by Alderman Nelson. I will point out, if you turn the page to 180, and you look at the legal document, which is the ordinance, it's all correct. All right.
And that's why the motion should be.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Oh, it actually isn't correct. It says, it says of engineering capital funds in the ordinance, so now we got to change the ordinance to.
The account number is.
Well, I think we should. Did you add? To my motion, I think we need to.
Correct the verbiage.
Correct the ordinance, because the ordinance uses engineering capital funds, and it's not engineering capital funds, it's capital improvement fund.
Actually, you read that.
So you could, I did, I did read it, so.
Right.
You can correct the heading of the ordinance with the motion I made.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hope for.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman Eichman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absences, no abstentions. We did G-14, we did G-15, thank you very much. We have three closed sessions, four closed sessions, so let's move on to item H, licenses. Alderman Eichman. Who's going to do it? Alderman Eichman.
I'm just calling your name, nobody tells me these things. Go ahead. So we approved the State Bridge Suites, the race day events for the Elf Run and Winter Run Series, the Will and Sprocket Fat Bike Event is pending route clearance with our City Engineer, as well as the Franklin Police Department, the RAC Sports Complex, APFC, MMA Midwest Indoor Invitational. It will be approved contingent upon seating arrangements by the Inspection Services. Kaylee Nikla with Lux is approved, Isabella Pandora is approved, Amrish Patel is approved, Nicole Salis is approved. I apologize for mispronunciation of names. Abhikpal Singh is approved, Adria Walker is approved, Adie Johnson is approved, Eric Zombrowski, we are holding for appearance. The fireworks display process is tabled from tonight's meeting. We did run out of time in licensing. We did approve and review the recommendation regarding current alcohol beverage licenses, enforcement policy guidelines, and license committee administrative rules and procedures, as well as approving the statistics on existing alcohol beverage licenses in the City of Franklin, and the statistics on quota of available licenses in relation thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Barber. I have a question on the MMA event. Is there a requirement that they utilize the services of the Franklin Fire Department and reimburse?
Correct. They will be using one ambulance, two paramedics, and they will be paying.
And just so people watching at home don't think I'm picking on them, it's because the unique nature of the event needs the medical services and capabilities that are only provided by the paramedic. Okay.
Mayor, note, two Ascension and MASH will also be there providing medical care, as well as the paramedics. Thank you.
Alderman.
On the reviewing recommendation for the policy guidelines, the, while we did approve them, we motioned to send the draft to the city attorney for review, and it will come back based on his comments.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item I, vouchers and payrolls. We need a motion approving the following city vouchers, an ending date of October 13th in the amount of $2,614,998.70, and payroll dated October 7th, 2022, in the amount of $429,507.59, and payments of various payroll deductions in the amount of $234,748.23, city matching payments, and payroll estimated for October 21st at $445,000, and payments of various payroll deductions estimated $470,000 plus city matching payments. Prove the release of payment of the state of Wisconsin in the amount of $167,841.44, and approve release of payment to Crossroads Pizza, for a whole lot of pizza at $229.25.
Motion to approve.
Barbara and Eichman. You got to just, well, you know. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absences, no abstentions. With that, we've reached the end of our broadcast day. We may, thank you, Karen, have a great night. We may come back on YouTube at the discretion of the Council after these four closed-session items. So with that, we'll stop our stream.
Move a five-minute recess.
Oh, wait a minute, I got to do this. Let's go to closed session first. Is there a motion to go to close?
Motion, second.
Yeah. Which one?
Let me.
Okay, we did that. All right, we're going to do Sam's Real Estate Trust. Is there a motion under closed? This is G. Oh, FF, okay. Item G-16, page 199. Is there a motion under closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985/172 to confer with legal counsel but account counsel, whose running advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body with respect to subject litigation, reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matter discussed there and as deemed appropriate?
So moved.
Second.
Hope for and Hanneman. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Hope for.
Aye.
Alderman Eichman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absences, no abstentions. We will have a five-minute recess, be back at quarter.